The following is a rebroadcast of the Newark City Schools Board of Education's most recent general monthly meeting.
Good evening, welcome. For the record, this is the March 10th, 2014 Newark City School Board of Education meeting, being held at the Roosevelt ASC, and it is currently 6:30 PM. Jeff, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Blowers, here. Mr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
Mrs. Nickum?
Here.
Mr. Blind?
Here.
We have a quorum of five.
And Mr. Carr will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No. But, under special reports, we'll save the technology update for the technology contract in the back. We're gonna try to get students and staff in here. Like, last month, we had the kindergartners with the testing, and they're missing so much time, we don't want to put any extra burden on our staff or students right now with the testing. With that, we'll move on to communications from the floor. Public comments, if anyone has anything they'd like to address the board concerning, please step to the podium, give your name, your address. You'll be given a maximum of five minutes to speak, and as always, I will mention that this is the point in time for you to have your say. We will not, at this point, be getting into a back-and-forth discussion. So if anyone would like to, feel free to step to the podium. Being none, we'll move on to the public meeting on the issue of the employment of retired, rehired personnel by the Newark City School District Board of Education. Members of the public are invited to provide input to the board on the issue of Judith McNish's reemployment in the district following her retirement. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and all public comment will be closed after 30 minutes. Would anyone like to speak regarding Judith McNish's reemployment? Members of the public are invited to provide input to the board on the issue of Amy Norman's reemployment in the district following her retirement. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and all public comment will be closed after 30 minutes. Would anyone like to speak regarding the reemployment of Amy Norman? Members of the public are invited to provide input to the board on the issue of Jeff Petrie's reemployment in the district following his retirement. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and all public comment will be closed after 30 minutes. Would anyone like to speak regarding Jeff's reemployment? Okay, lastly, members of the public are invited to provide input to the board on the issue of Martha Harmon's reemployment in the district following her retirement. Surprisingly, speakers are limited to five minutes each, and all public comment will be closed after 30 minutes. Would anybody like to speak regarding Martha Harmon's reemployment? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to treasurer's recommendations. Jeff?
Treasurer's recommendations, item 2A, approval of the board meeting minutes. It is recommended the minutes of the following board meeting be approved, as shown in the appendix, for February 10th, 2014, regular meeting. Item 2B, approval of February 2014 financial statements and payment to vendors. It is recommended the financial statements, including investments, interest terms in the amount of $2,541.93, and payment to vendors be approved, as presented to the Board of Education. Item 2D is approval of 2014 supplemental permanent appropriation resolution. The items on that is, for the general fund, there's $726,000 to be added to our appropriation, and that is for, $500,000 for employee insurance premium, $50,000 for tech service to purchase a couple of techs for the rest of the year. General fund, E-rate of $140,000 for computers, and students and juvenile potential is $36,000. The remainder of the appropriations is Heritage Principal Fund of $2,0950, NEA, Jody Wynn, John Clem, iPads, $5,000. ODE allocation changes of a negative $1,721. ODE additional funding for Fund 516 of $41,032.58. ODE reallocation of $33,416.25, and ODE reallocation on Fund 590 of $83.29. Item 2E is the approval of transfer fund. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following transfer funds. From '03 permanent improvement to '034 maintenance fund, $412,881, as required by our OSFC project is a once-a-year transfer that we do into the maintenance fund for the new buildings. Item 2F, acceptance of donation on behalf of a call to college. The Eli Lilly Company matches the donation from Stephen South of $500. And item 2G is authorization for me to disperse those funds to the Call to College in the amount of $500. Finally, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the payment for an invoice in the amount of $4,012.44. The reason it's on the Board of Agenda by itself is because it was an old invoice and old payment, and the money was spent, so the Board has to approve it if it's over $3,000, which it is. And it was for the Collins Writing, is a formula writing program utilized for grades 6 through 12 to help our students transition into new standards, new testing, and overall writing improvement. If there's no questions on those items, I would ask for your motion and hopeful approval.
So moved.
Second.
Kurt, Mike. Any discussion, comments, questions? Okay, Jeff, call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickum?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 3, superintendent's recommendations. Okay, under personnel, item 1, we have 15 certified retirements that have come in this past month, so we appreciate all that our staff have done. We'll continue to do the rest of the year, and have done for us in the past for our students, good people. Look at this list today, and, you know, it's gonna be a challenge for us, as we're anticipating another, you know, 30 or 35 new teachers coming in next year. And so, we concentrated today a lot on barbs recruiting, and so, but we will invite all of our teachers in the May meeting who are retiring to be recognized by the Board, so we appreciate those. We also have one classified staff member, bus driver Randy Marmee. A resignation and supplemental contract from Krista Campbell at Ben Franklin. Item 3, want to recognize Kim Jakeway, who is filling in for Martha Harmon in her absence, and Martha's coming back a little bit periodically off and on, trying to work her way back in, but we were fortunate to have Kim available, who's a retired principal from Johnstown, doing a fantastic job for us. Item 7, substitutes, want to point out Rebecca Rengardner, who is a former teacher. We seem to be getting a lot of these former teachers coming back and subbing, so we do appreciate that. That's a good pool of people, so. Items 1 through 8. Okay, with that, we'd entertain a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations, item 3A, 1 through 8.
So moved.
Second.
Bev and Tim. Questions, comments? Can Jeff call the roll?
Mrs. Nickum?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Under personnel, or, excuse me, students and curriculum, item, I'll call your attention to 2A and 2B. Item 2A is the special ed contracts with school districts, Licking Valley and Riverview, cooperative program contracts with Licking County ESC, related services contract, that's basically, we're still responsible for above and beyond cost of our special ed students that are placed in other districts, and so that's what that contract is with the ESC. Also, under 6, a public announcement regarding Title I funds. Newark City Schools will soon be planning for Title I monies for the 2014-2015 school year. These are federal funds used to support the education of economically disadvantaged students attending the Newark City Schools. Each year, the district collects inputs from parents, students, staff, and community members regarding the expenditures of these monies. If you have any ideas regarding these funds, please send comments or requests to Mindy Vaughn, the electronic mail at mvon@lacca.org, or by phone, 670-7050. Item B, gives us a whole lot of choice. We're required to raise our student lunch prices. So next year, K-8 lunch, $2.55. High school daily menu lunch, $2.55, and pizza and deli lunch, $2.95. Also includes par excellence that we provide meals for at $2.70, and it reflects a 10% increase per lunch. Item C, gifts. Again, most of you know, or should know by now, that State Farm Automobile Insurance Company, $10,000 donation for linkage students, the linkage coordinators spend on their students, and I think that's the third year now we've received that, so we appreciate the support from State Farm. Also, another $500 donation to State Farm, or from State Farm, into the district. So, two donations from State Farm. As we all know, we're very fortunate to receive this type of support from all of our companies, but businesses in town, but very thankful of State Farm. Under, I'd like to go ahead, since we have some different contracts, just to go ahead and approve items A, B, and C, and then do each individual contract. Okay. So we will entertain a motion to approve items 3, B, and C. So moved.
Second.
Kurt, Bev. Questions, comments, discussion?
Doug, you alluded to the fact, under the lunches, not much of a choice, but I wanted to make sure we're clear about that. We're required to raise those prices. It's not because we need to raise those prices in order for us to get support, we have to raise those prices, correct?
We've been operating in the black, so, in our cafeteria, and so, wouldn't necessarily call for an increase, but we're required to get the federal and state reimbursement, because we're required to charge so much for the free and reduced lunch rate, and so, that's a...
So those prices specifically are the requirement? Those aren't like, say, maximums that we're moving up to?
No, they're...
That is the minimum required for us to continue to be qualified for the federal free and reduced lunch. They tell us what we have to raise each year. If we don't do it, we could lose all that funding for about 60% of our kids that get free and reduced lunch. Where does the fee increase go to? What's it used?
It goes into the cafeteria fund, and then we have to file for reimbursement from the feds for the kids that are free and reduced. This is the rate that the kids that are not on free and reduced have to pay, for us to qualify for the ones that are free and reduced.
Our reimbursement is the same amount, correct?
Yes.
So our private pay or not subsidized, free and reduced?
Right. Our...
Except to the extent that they're paying more than it costs us to have the lunch.
Yeah, I mean, they are...
We didn't have raised these prices.
Because we're operating in the black, we wouldn't need to increase.
Our food service fund has a million, $90,000 in it. If it wasn't for the federal program and helping 60% of our kids, we probably would not be raising the prices there. Would not have been my recommendations, probably would not have been Mr. Ute's recommendation. But to qualify for that free and reduced program, this is the level we have to price at this year.
Let me know the day we have steak.
Okay.
A million dollars.
Yeah. Won't happen.
Chicken steak.
Thanks for pointing that out, Kurt.
Then we will pull that up and go to separately.
We have to read... I think we can pull it out.
You just...
I'd like to make a motion separate. Separate which, the...
6B, please.
6B?
Yes.
Second.
Call the roll on that.
Mr. Blowers? That's voting on 6B to separate it only. That's what we're voting on. Is any further discussion? Okay?
He said call the roll, so Mr. Blowers?
No.
No, this is the motion to separate.
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you. Mrs. Nickum?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
So I have four to separate, one to leave where it's at.
No, that was 5-0 to separate.
It was 5 to separate.
Okay, 5 to separate?
Yep.
So to separate it. So now, you had a motion on the floor for items clear through C. You want to leave that motion standing, since you pulled 6B out, I assume?
Yes.
And I have on that, Mr. Harden was the first, Mrs. Nickum was the second. Any discussion on that?
I think we had the discussion.
All right? Can we call the roll?
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickum?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
No.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Four yeses, one no.
And now, the B...
Vote on B.
A motion to vote on 3A, 3B, 6B.
Approval of cafeteria fees for 2014-15 school year.
Correct. Any further discussion on that before we vote?
Now we're voting on 6B.
Yes. Okay, call the roll, then.
You're gonna take a motion first.
Okay.
Motion to vote on it.
Motion to vote on 6B.
Second.
Carr.
Want any discussion?
Additional discussion?
And I'll call the roll.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
No.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickum?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Have four yeses, one no.
Okay, Doug, let's move on to D. Okay, under D, business, we have a few contracts tonight. The first one is the approval of technology service agreement with InfoLink, which will basically get us through June of this year for InfoLink to come in and provide support five days a week, support service for our system here in the district. This is due to, we had Jamison-Ables, and I do want to, I'll mention Jamison-Ables and Brian Gibson, who have been here for, you know, at least five-plus years, Jamison probably seven, who have moved on to other opportunities, and so we're down two people. So what we've done is take the money that we spent on Jamison and contracted with a company to come in and make sure our system makes it through the year, the school year, with some testing things we have coming up, and they're also evaluating our system when they're in here, in terms of saying, how are your servers? Do you have enough servers, and things like that? So it's a cost-neutral spot for the district, and we're getting the evaluation of our system. So that will just carry us through June 30, $23,970. Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the technology services agreement as shown in item 3D1A. So moved.
Or second.
Kurt and Tim, discussion, comments, questions? Okay, call the roll, Jeff.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickum?
Yes.
Okay, under B, approval of a contract with Ohio Health. We have talked about that a few months ago, where, last month, Mark Doty retired after 31 years with the district, and so, we went out and looked for an alternative way to service our kids. In the past, we'd spent about $103,000 with one full-time person and one person on a supplemental in the fall, winter, and spring. What this contract gives us is one full-time person. We'll keep that supplemental with that staff member, Mike McNichol, for the spring, for the winter and fall, I should say, fall, winter, spring, next year, and we also get an additional 20 hours from a new person. And so, we're increasing our staff by a half a person, 20 hours per week, and we're reducing the cost about $53,000. And, so, you know, we feel pretty fortunate to do that. Ohio Health has agreed to allow us to keep our relationship with Licking Memorial Hospital, because they don't see them as a competitor. Licking Memorial does not do athletic training, which was a concern of ours, and so, we've cleared that up. We basically would put a banner at our athletic events, an announcement, add in the program, those type of things. And I will state that this does not mean that Ohio Health gets exclusive rights to our athletes who get injured for medical reasons. It does not, this is not to provide that opportunity for that, so a child and parent can still go to the doctor that they choose to go to, and that was an important consideration for us. We feel fortunate, it's a good move for us, and we do appreciate the support and leadership of Mark Doty, as Mark is known around not only central Ohio, but the state for his, especially his work with concussion, but his progressive nature that he's done in his business, so we're fortunate. Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve item 3D1B, the contract with Ohio Health.
So moved.
Second.
Bev and Mike. Discussion, questions, comments?
I just want to say, one of my concerns was the signage and the size of the signs. I've seen the Ohio Health banner in three other school districts in the last couple of months, and they were actually quite reasonably sized and really much smaller than I anticipated they would be, so I would be pleased to see it.
Are we at a point that we can name who that full-time trainer will be? They'll do that. Okay. This person will still report to Jeff Quackenbush, and Jeff will have say in who the person is and the halftime person, and so their immediate contact will be Jeff, so he will supervise that whole selection process and their duties when they're here. Other questions? Can Jeff call the roll, please?
Mrs. Nickum?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Item C, approval of contract with Ohio Equities Realtors, which is Steve Lehman, to market the Dale Drive property, the five acres up across from Kroger's. That's North Elementary site. That building was demolished about five years ago, Thanksgiving time, somewhere in that neighborhood. We've had a few offers on the property, but none that the Board has taken, and so, this is a contract enter-in for six months or longer, if he has somebody interested that way, and there's no upfront money or no liability from the Board, other than if Steve brings a buyer, then, you know, commission will be paid. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve item 3D1C, the contract with Ohio Equity Realtors. So moved.
Second.
Kurt and Tim. Comments, questions? Okay, Jeff, please call the roll.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickum?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
And then item D, approval of E-rate contracts. Nothing new on here, bar of services. Loan providers have been selected for June 30th, 2014, July 1st, 2015, E-rate year. Services will be provided approximately a 79% discount. Local service with Windstream, long-distance service with Century Link, web hosting, E-School View. I apologize. I'll have a sheet for you, that you can look at, an updated sheet. Nothing changed over that. Cellular service with Verizon, voice-over IP, which is, the web hosting's a three-year, and the voice-over IP's three, also with Northern Buckeye Educational Council, first year, Northern Buckeye Educational Conference, second year and on, which, we have a representative, at least, he came in here, was it Dan? Yeah, Dan came in, so at least he can raise his hand, in case anybody had a question he needed to answer that way. I would share with you that our annual costs are lower than the past, because this is really the first year that we haven't been under construction, and that's why the costs were higher, and reimbursement were higher during the last five-year period, so. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the E-rate contracts, item 3D1D.
So moved.
Second.
Bev and Mike. Comments, discussion? Okay, call the roll, Jeff.
Mrs. Nickum?
Yes.
Mr. Blowers?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Board of Education reports. Now I get to read again. "It is recommended the Board of Education announce its intent to adopt the following policies as shown in the appendix, and announcement being made that these policies will be available to the Board, staff, and public for inspection in the office of the Superintendent of Schools from March 10th, 2014 through April 14, 2014. File 2271, post-secondary enrollment programs. File 2431, interscholastic athletics. File 2623.02, third-grade reading guarantee. File 5111, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. File 5310, health services. File 5340, student accidents. File 5513, care of school property. File 5517.01, bullying and other forms of aggressive behavior. File 5571, anti-harassment. File 9160, public attendance at school events. File 9270, equivalent education outside..." And that's something missing there, we'll worry about that later. "File 9700, relations with special interest group schools, parentheses, homeschooling." And I liked it better when you had to read those. So, again, those will be available for public inspection here at Roosevelt from today through April 14. Any discussion regarding those items?
Just that the Salt Committee met and reviewed these.
They're all Salt Committee, correct?
Yes.
We reviewed them in excruciating detail, though.
Excruciating, over a noontime meeting without lunch.
Uh-oh.
Nothing against Morris, not here today.
And none of these are new policies, are they? Just cleaning up the wording?
Updated, yes.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to board discussion. Start at the far end.
I'll pass.
I'd like to recognize the students of the Newark High School Symphonic Band for their outstanding effort in the OMEA District 10 competition this past weekend, and also offer up a congratulations to the students of the Newark High School Choirs for their, another successful year at OMEA District Competition. Also had a great time at the basketball game Saturday, wish the outcome was different, but it was a great turnout, and it was a great feeling to be there with everybody. Thank you.
Well, it's neat to see a lot of our athletes compete, the girls' team, the basketball team, of course, the boys, wrestlers, and so much else, the swim team competing, the bowling team. the bowling team, given the districts and doing well there. A lot of neat things going on. Want to thank those folks who gave us gifts. I certainly appreciate the community supporting Newark City Schools and the kids. And also, the number of retirees. And when I first started this, I didn't know as many of them. And now, you start seeing them, and you say, boy, there are some wonderful people that are singing happy trails and riding off into the sunset. And we wish them well and thank them, because they made a difference in the lives of lots and lots of children. They can be, they would be pleased to have them.
Just good luck to everyone out there taking the OTT tuss this week to the sophomores. My son's a junior, and so he's glad he gets to sleep in every day this week a little bit.
Just like to say, I'm happy to be a cat, happy to be here. As of March, I have completed five years in the Newark City School District. And I was proud to take the job five years ago, and I'm proud to still be here. Hope you keep me around for another five to 10 years.
We'll see. We'll see.
That was a rousing endorsement.
I don't have a vote, Jeff, but I think you should stay around another 10, 10 years. I mean that. I think you're a great treasurer and a good fellow. Want to mention about Blizzard Bags. The elementary once, first round went out a week ago, high school this past week. My philosophy on our Blizzard Bags, and I appreciate our staff, all of our staff, creating these Blizzard Bags. And we did it in a way that, you know, would enhance some extra work for our, prep for our testing. But we didn't want to do it in a way, you know, we had a chance to sit back and watch a little bit. And I talked to some districts and some parents in some districts regarding them. And one thing we didn't want to do is how our students sitting from 7:00 AM to 7:00 at night at home doing work. That wasn't our intention. And so, I think the first round's going pretty good. Even though this week, the state will rule on how many days they're going to extend the calamity days to, our philosophy here is that we're going to go ahead and do our Blizzard Bags and not worry about if it takes us to five or below, just because we had people create those, and we think it's a benefit to the students. So there's a possibility that we could go down to four days, or, I don't know, they're calling for 50-degree change in snow on Wednesday. So I'm going to knock on some wood that we don't miss any more school, but that winter might not be over. But I did want to mention that. I want to congratulate Seth Roy for his leadership in our district with our communications, social media. We won three awards in social media, three achievement awards. And we won an award for our Facebook, District Facebook, District Twitter, and our athletic Twitter account. I think we can all attest to, if you're on Twitter and you don't know the score of a basketball, or a football, or bowling, or something that way, you're not checking your Twitter account. Because we've got a big group of people, not just school people, but community people are out there and keeping everybody informed. And, you know, I bring it back to Bev being in Toledo in the fall one Saturday night, at about 10 after 10, tweeting out that our band qualified for the state competition. And that was nice to know. And so, Seth, thank you for your leadership and congratulations on those awards. I think we were, we were pointed out for our pictures and things like that. So that's fantastic to see. All of you have mentioned the choir and the band, wrestling, bowling, our boys and girls' basketball. I'm going to extend that out to our cheerleaders who work very hard. But I'm also going to point out to our student section, high school student section. And I will tell you, every now and then, we had to go over and say, just cheer for the Cats and keep your comments to the Cats. You know, I pay attention to those kind of things when I'm at games. And sometimes, we play some schools that have more high school students than we have and have no student section there or any theme to go along with the night. And I'm proud of our kids. Every year, it seems to be getting a little bit better, and we represent ourselves very well. And they are a big part of the game. And it's nice to see a lot of kids show up. And I know I'll compliment Coach Quackenbush for, you know, our kids file in and people say, where the heck did all these kids come from? They're coming on a spirit bus, a lot of them do. And so, I want to point out that not many districts provide a bus and, you know, pay for it out of the basketball boosters or something that way, and provide an opportunity for a student to go to a game, just purchase your ticket. And I know that, I see Dave Bardley sitting back there. Dave probably has ridden that spirit bus more than once. Thank you, Dave, for that. Because the staff member has Pam Evans, Tom Bowman. I mean, we've had a good number of our staff. And so, it's just great to see our students file in and support each other. And it makes you proud of the Newark City Schools. And it is always a great time to be a Cat, Tim.
That's right. Okay, a lot of what I was going to say has already been said, so I'll just briefly congratulate all the winter sports teams, congratulate the choirs. We had four of our choirs achieve superior ratings. We had two high school groups and a heritage group all receive recognition for their performance at the STEM Fest here a couple of weeks ago. Congratulations to them. The Symphonic Band, Bev and Mike and I all went to see them Friday night. They did excellent. One thing that hasn't been mentioned for a while here, not this weekend, but the next weekend, our Junior ROTC has been invited to present the colors at one of the boys' state championship basketball games. So that's pretty neat. You put all these things together, anybody who says we don't have a lot of great kids doing neat things is sleeping. Toby Hardwick, again, I think he finished second in the state?
Yeah.
First in the state?
3200 years.
That was a couple of weeks ago at the indoor track meet, following his 17th in the country in cross-country. So he has signed, will be running in college. Again, congratulations to Seth on the awards in the Ohio School Public Relations Association. I'll give a plug for the girls' basketball team. On Friday, March 21st, to all of our millions of viewers out there, they are having a parents' night out where the girls' basketball players, their parents and the coaches will watch kids, I think five to 12, ages five to 12, at the high school gym. They've got all sorts of activities planned. So parents can have a night out without, stop doing that, I told you, don't do that, leave your sister alone, all those good things that we all remember.
I was going to say, you've been to my house?
Might earn their 20s, and we still have to say that sometimes. And the only other thing, for all our millions of viewers,